This conference will now be recorded.
Call this meeting over. Roll call Shannon.
Mayor Trujillo?
Here.
Mr. Butcher?
Here.
Mr. Campos?
Here.
Mr. Gandy?
I know he's on.
Commissioner Gandy?
Was.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Gandy, I want to share with you. Please be with Commissioner Campos, please.
Join me in prayer, please. Are we having the roll call first though? Did we complete the roll call, I'm sorry?
We did.
We did.
Okay, alright. Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in the spirit of gratitude. We want to thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather here tonight, Lord, to better our community. We ask, Lord, that you make your presence known and you comfort and console those who are currently infected with COVID, Lord, or cancer, and those are those families who have recently lost loved ones to these and other diseases. We also want to pray that you ask be that you be with those people who are unemployed right now, Lord, out of work. We also ask that you be with those frontline personnel who are combating this pandemic. The doctors, nurses, hospital personnel, our first responders, police officers and firemen, and all the city employees who are tasked with serving our community. Allow us to come together as a community, Lord, to serve those in most need. And we also ask for an end to this pandemic. And, Lord, we ask this in your precious Son, Jesus Christ's name, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. It is a symbol, a perfect principle, one and nine in closer.
Thank you, Commissioner. He has no mic. Commissioner Gandy has no mic. Do I have a motion to improve the agenda?
Still moved?
Second, motion was made with Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions by the board, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Do I have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion in consideration of minutes from November 23rd, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, roll call vote Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Campos?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to Commissioner and staff report. City Manager James will take questions from the board. That includes the Police Department and as well as the Fire Department. None of the staff members are here with us today, so James will take any questions from them. So first of all, Shannon is here with us, so Shannon, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to Commissioner Bowles.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for James. As we discussed before about businesses in the zone E, maintaining their storefronts, their properties, buildings, and also with the properties, residential properties with trash being built up and unsafe buildings. Been having questions asked to me about that as far as are we doing anything as far as getting some of these problem areas that we've talked about before taken care of?
Yes, sir. Part of the issue we have is that our municipal court cannot operate right now due to COVID restrictions. So we are doing our documentation, contacting those property owners, letting them know about the deficiencies. We can issue a citation. However, they can't actually have a court hearing right now because of the rules imposed by the New Mexico Supreme Court.
Okay, thank you on that. Another question, as far as with the continuity grant funding of the businesses that have received the funding, got their invoices all turned in yet? And if they haven't, are we sending any reminders out to let them know that there's only a certain amount of time that they have to get them in?
To answer your last question, yes, we are in contact with those. We only have four projects that haven't submitted their final invoices yet. But the majority of the others, in fact, you'll probably see on the payables report tonight, we've issued payments to the majority of those businesses who were awarded that. But all of the businesses are aware of those deadlines.
Okay. And I don't know, maybe you're going to be touching base on this, or David's going to be touching base on this as far as with the COVID. I know that vaccines were sent out, if we received any, if they're going to be administered. Questions about that, but I said, maybe you're going to talk about that later. So if you're kind of, you don't have to answer any of that right now.
We will, we'll address that in a few minutes, sir.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowles. Moving on to Commissioner Bernard.
I'm good at this time, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes, sir, I had a question and a comment for James, and I believe Mr. David Shaw is on, is attending our meeting tonight too, so he might be able to answer my first question to James. James, during the last meeting, we had the staff report and you made mention that Norley Hospital is licensed for 25 hospital beds. But the only way to staff all those beds is to pull resources from other services. It also, we also heard you mentioned that there's a tier plan in place. And I'm just curious, what's the status out there at our hospital, James or Mr. Shaw, if you'd like to jump in?
I think I'll let Mr. Shaw field that question, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Commissioner Campos. So as far as a kind of a status update at the hospital, what's your referring to as part of our pandemic plan? And we currently are licensed for 25 beds. We have 13 beds that are designated as COVID beds, and the remaining beds are designated for non-COVID patients that require hospitalization. And our tiered staffing system allows us to pull nurses from other areas of the hospital to care for patients in the emergency room and in on the floor. We have gone as high as a tier two. So what that means is we've closed the OR, we've scaled back operations in our pain center. However, staffing has stabilized a bit. And what I mean by that is, you know, we have staff that get sick just like everybody else, and that creates some shortages in staffing. So we have to make sure that the floor and the ER are covered. But we, we're in a much better place this week than we were a couple of weeks ago. And we, as far as the volume we're seeing in the, on the floor and in the emergency room, we hit our capacity on Saturday of 13 COVID patients. And we're transferring a number of patients to tertiary facilities in Albuquerque, some to Big Spring, Lubbock, and other places that are too critical to be cared for here locally. So we're still seeing a spike, but things seem to be leveling off just a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, just a follow up question to that. How full are the surrounding or, you know, even far off hospitals that can accommodate those patients that have been infected with COVID?
Lubbock, Texas has practically been on diversion for two months. That means that they will not accept patients from us. I'll give you an example. About two weeks ago, I had a critically ill patient we needed to find a bed for, and I contacted the city. They came off diversion at 2:00 AM, and they had 30 transfers by 4:00 AM, and they went back on diversion. And that's from all over the region. So unfortunately, most of our patients that need a higher level of care than we can give, they have to be transferred either to Albuquerque or other areas. There's some complications with that. These patients need a high level of oxygen. And so ground transportation is not a possibility if it's two hours or less, or two hours or more. So we have to use fixed wing or helicopter. And there's just not enough helicopters and fixed wing in New Mexico to quickly arrange for these transfers. So that's leading to some delays. But I think, as I said earlier, things are stabilizing a bit.
Well, over at hospital, you mentioned Mr. Shaw that had a diversion for a couple of hours, and then they were open and they were closing.
That was covenant. UMC's been on diversion. Lubbock Heart Hospital hasn't taken patients for over two months, and it's their current policy not to take patients from New Mexico.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just had one comment for James Williams, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
James, I was just contacted just a while ago by my neighbor, Mr. D. Brennan, and he just wanted me to pass on to you, and I believe he's going to write a letter to you. He had a recent opportunity to go to our MBD office. His initial appointment was canceled by the state. He scheduled a second one, was able to get in, and he talked to Maria, as a matter of fact. And he was very, very happy with the way that Maria served, served him and attended to him. And he just wanted to convey that he was very upset when he got there. He was more upset at the state than the city of Lovington. But he was very pleased with the way that Maria attended to him. And he said she was very professional and very courteous. And he was thanking her by the time he left that day. So he wanted to convey that to me, to convey that to you, James, and he's going to write a letter in that regard to Maria.
Great. I'll definitely let her know and look forward to that letter.
And so that brings up my last, my last question for you, James. Why is the state of New Mexico canceling appointments for our residents who are scheduled to come into the MBD here in Lovington? You know?
I'm not sure, but I did write myself a note to my Maria. Why they may do that?
Mr. Brennan advised that he only got an email from the state saying that his appointment was canceled with no specific reason or cause for canceling his appointment.
Yeah, pretty, pretty tough. I know. I was thinking about that this morning too, Commissioner. How, how, you know, they expect that they, their expectations of us are in a higher standard than theirs, theirs are. That's, that's, that's the bad part about it, you know, we, they expect us to have everything in a timely fashion, but yet they're, they can delay, suspend, or whatever they want in the name of COVID and leave us out in limbo and searching for resources to, to, to overcome our, our situation. So I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. As an additional note, James, Mr. Brennan did say that Maria told him that she had no idea or control over why the state was canceling appointments.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this is actually the first time I've heard of that. Happy to find out.
Yeah, if you would please, I appreciate it. Thank you, James, and appreciate the comments here.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Commissioner Gandy?
He's still having a mic.
So Mr. Gandy does not have a mic. We're going to move on to City Manager James Williams.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, update on the North Main Utility Project. Because of COVID, they did have to stop operations for a little bit. They've just been dealing with operators who were sick. They are looking at a mid-January completion date. Right now, it looks like they're just finishing up on the lift station for the sewer and then they'll install the water line. Master Court Project. I did get an email from Judge Finger saying that the state had reached out to him to be part of the Architectural Design RFP Committee, the selection committee. They have not set a date for that yet, but Judge Finger did say he would let me know so I could sit in on it. It would be a virtual review. As far as the Main Street Reconstruction, the letting or the opening of the bids is still slated for January 15th. They don't have any other information on that. I know that they were supposed to be doing type of mill and fill on that project on North Main. The DOT, the local DOT office who is doing that work was having issues with their mix. And I believe now it's a temperature issue, but that's still slated. We just don't know when they'll sort or finish on their repair. We do have, last thing, I know our application for the, the EDA Cares Funding for the water line replacement. With that particular project, we were not awarded the funding. However, we were told in January to reapply. They did reject, I think, about 100, over 100 applications with ours. They said it was just, it was hard to really tie it into the COVID funding. But the project, as far as the Economic Development Agency, their criteria, they said this project does fit that. And for us to reapply in January, which we're already working on, getting that coordinated and set up. So no, it's, it's not a final no yet. And then, of course, with our COVID update that we were talking about before, turn it over to Mr. Shaw. I know I have it in here, right here. I wanted to kind of review a couple of things, our facility status. I know that we had shut down to the public for about two weeks. And this was primarily due to the fact that we had a number of employees who were positive. They were symptomatic, they couldn't come into work. And we were pretty much operating out of skeleton crew. So we made the decision to reduce the risk to other employees as well as to the public to just close down and operate on what we call our critical staffing levels. Where we had employees who had to physically be present, we would alternate the days that they had to be present, the others would work remotely. We review that facility opening every week on Wednesday. This past Wednesday, we did decide to go and start reopening various facilities to the public. So we did reopen City Hall. We do public occupancy, you know, more than five at a time. And those, the hours of operation are 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Thursday. We do close 30 minutes early due to the fact that we use the remaining 30 minutes of the day to do more cleaning every 30 minutes. We're doing wipe, wipe downs of high contact surfaces that the public may use and also staff. Fridays, we are closed to the public so we can do a very thorough, deep thermal clean. Our library, we did open that back up. It's opened up to a minimum of, or a maximum of 20. We run that facility Monday through Friday, 30 to 5:30. Of course, on Saturdays, the staff still report, but they use that for the thermal cleaning of that facility as well. Motor vehicle, we just discussed, of course, it is by appointment only. They're open Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 4:30. They're still doing the frequent cleanings. We are closed to the public on Fridays so they can do those terminal, terminal cleanings. But they are required to schedule an appointment through the state motor vehicle department website. Our other facilities, of course, Municipal Court, they are able to take payments on already assessed fines. It's just they can't actually hold court. So the judge and the court clerk, they were working remotely, but they are coming back into the office to accept payments in person since we have started opening up our facilities to the public. Senior Citizen Center unfortunately is still closed to the public. We are doing our Grad and Go Meals, which we've seen over 100% increase since the beginning of the pandemic. Our senior citizen patrons taking advantage of that. We have reallocated some staff to help out during the three hours of the day where it's the most intense, just to keep that facility and that operation going. Our youth center, of course, is still closed to the public. We are still utilizing the personnel there for the healthcare, first responder, childcare, which is still being used. We're not at capacity, but it is being used heavily. Of course, parks and recreation, as far as organized sports and reservations, we don't offer those, but they can still utilize those facilities, just making sure that, you know, they adhere to the, to the requirements set forth by the public health order. But we don't have any reservations in place for organized league play or even reservations for birthday parties. Of course, it isn't really in this time of year where we have a lot of that. But those restrictions are still in place. As far as impacts to personnel, since the beginning of this, you can kind of see the reason why we decided to close city facilities. Is we were going along with very few cases, but you can see around the beginning of November, we saw a substantial increase in the number of positive cases amongst our employees, which we have not, we've done our own tracing. We have not found any evidence that says that it was an employee-to-employee exposure. A lot of the, well, the exposures that we've found were from outside of work exposures and contacted individuals like that. We did shut down, of course, we just barely opened up. And you can see that our positive rate, it does, with the cumulative number of cases, it does mirror what's been going on statewide. But we did go for a seven day period where we didn't have any exposures or any positives. We did have one individual, though, today reported positive, positive test result. So 27 personnel out of our workforce and 19% overall spread amongst different departments. But of those, it was just kind of curious, one of the things that were required to report was, are they symptomatic or asymptomatic? And over 60, well, 66% of those individuals all got tested because they were symptomatic. As far as testing, this is from just the site that Norley is, is operating through the fire station. Today, or actually, as of the ninth, they've tested over 1,400 people with an average daily of about 76. They did change the hours of operation. It still runs Monday through Friday, but in Lovington, at the old fire station, they're operating that site from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. So that's where a lot more people tested, and it's very convenient. From a case update, of course, we're still looking at 50, over 5,500 total cases, positive cases in Lee County and just the 88260 zip code, and these were taken from the Department of Health website. We've had over 1,100 positives just in the 88260 zip code. Of course, a total of 68 deaths throughout our county. Recoveries, 2,100, over 2,100. And then, of course, our, our total tests conducted is over 37,000. We still are, and this was taken, these statistics were taken off the state website about 3 o'clock today. We still are one of the red counties with our cases per 100,000 of over 128 or positivity rate of over 32%. Of course, for reference, you can find that, you know, those numbers do improve, which they will. I'm remaining optimistic that they will. We'll eventually, what this means is we'll move to a different tier, and we'll be able to have businesses open up to, I guess, on a larger scale. But the last thing, and I would like to turn this over to Mr. Shaw, is to talk about the vaccination efforts that are starting this week. So Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And let me just start off by saying how much Norley Hospital District appreciates our community and appreciates all of our partners, especially the city, the county, and the school districts, because we couldn't do what we're doing right now without everybody's help. I will say this, the good news is the Pfizer vaccine arrived in the state of New Mexico earlier today and late last night. There are five hubs located across the state, Las Cruces, Farmington, Santa Fe, Albuquerque, and then there's a DOH whips, or warehouse in Albuquerque. All the other hospitals across the state will receive their vaccines from the DOH warehouse in Albuquerque. So you may have seen on the news today that Krista St. Vincent in Santa Fe was already starting their vaccination clinics, and that's because they received their vaccine directly from Pfizer. We have placed our order and our allotment for Norley is 250 vaccines. Lee Regional is going to be receiving 100, I believe, 125 vaccines. We've chosen as two entities, Lee Regional and Norley, to work together and combine our resources. And we've decided that we want to put our EMS services in the front of the line. And so we'll be vaccinating this week 21 EMS personnel from the Hobbs Department and 10 personnel from the Lovington Department. After that, we'll then start vaccinating hospital employees. We'll be starting with the, those that have the higher risk and the, and the more, the higher exposure to COVID, and then we'll work down that list. Most likely, we'll have enough vaccines, we will not have enough vaccine this week to vaccinate all of the healthcare workers, and it will require another allotment. So the way this is supposed to work, Pfizer will be shipping out to the state of New Mexico, and this is divided per capita across the United States. So the New Mexico received 17,500 doses, and those were allotted to each hospital based on bed size, population, and a survey that was filled out by each hospital. And so that's, that's why we received more than Lee Regional, because we're a larger facility than Lee Regional. I anticipate that that allotment will continue next week and probably into the third week after Christmas. There's a possibility as production goes up through Pfizer that we may see those allotments increase. Norley is the only facility in southeastern New Mexico that has purchased an ultra-low temperature freezer. And once we receive that in January, that will allow us to be a hub for the southeast corner of the state, allowing us to keep the frozen vaccine in our storage and then distribute that to other facilities across southeastern New Mexico. The Pfizer vaccine, it has a logistical challenge in that it must be kept at 80 degrees below zero Celsius. Once it's thawed and put in a refrigerator, it's good for only 120 hours. So currently, our vaccine is sitting in the warehouse in Albuquerque at 80 degrees below zero. And once they take it out and put it in the refrigerator and it's shipped to us, we have 120 hours to administer those doses. We have set up, and we pre-arranged this last week, a vaccination clinic Thursday afternoon at the event center, and that is to take care of the Lee Regional employees. at the event center, and that is to take care of the Lee Regional employees and the EMS services in Hobbs. And then we have an all-day vaccination clinic on Friday. In both cases, the local police departments are helping us with crowd control, direction. We also have EMS services. Livingston's going to have an ambulance on site in case of any emergency. So again, we could not do this without our partners because we're stretched thin at the hospital, but we're excited about getting our staff vaccinated. Now, where do we go from here? It will probably take us three to four weeks to get hospital employees vaccinated. We then expand out to other healthcare workers, local dentists, optometrists, other clinics in our community. And we have been anticipating this for over a month, and we have been meeting with those entities for the last month, and they have been placed on alert. They have a register, we'll send out a registration form to all of them within the next few days so that they can register and get an appointment to get their vaccine. Now, the CDC has guided, has provided guidance for us as we complete the healthcare workforce. We then move to the next criteria, which is essential workers, and then the next criteria is adults sixty-five and older, and then the last one is high-risk medical conditions. Once those four areas have been completed, then my understanding is, is open to the general public. What Norley's strategy is for Lee County is to work with our partners, and I might also add that between the two school districts, Hobbs and Livingston, they're providing us eighteen volunteer nurses. So again, you can see we're able to pull this off because of these partnerships. We're hoping to be able to vaccinate somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand to two thousand a week, once the allocations get to that level, and to do that, to do that on a consistent basis until we get into May. At that point, we could potentially vaccinate, if people are willing to have the vaccine, thirty-five thousand people, and with the existing positive people in the community, we then can get to a point where we're nearing something that we call herd immunity. So that may be optimistic on my part, but that's certainly what we're shooting for, and I think we can pull that off, and we're certainly going to do our best to, for our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know sometimes I get asked questions about the vaccine itself, about the side effects, different things like that. And I will tell you, I've done a lot of research, and I would encourage everyone, if you want to get more information, go to the CDC website. They just downloaded all the information about the clinical trials, potential side effects. But this is a messenger RNA vaccine. It does not have a live virus, a dead virus, or an attenuated virus in it. This messenger RNA actually sends a message to your DNA in your cells to produce a particular protein that is the same protein that's found on the virus itself. And so the immune system recognizes that as a foreign body, produces antibodies for it. This messenger RNA does not last long in your system, and so that's why you have to have the second shot. And the Pfizer vaccine requires a second shot at twenty-one days, give or take a couple days. And the Moderna vaccine requires a second shot. It's also a messenger RNA vaccine. It requires a second shot in twenty-eight days. The side effects from the Pfizer vaccine trials that were done, there were forty-five thousand people in the trials. There were three point eight percent of the individuals in that trial that experienced fatigue for a day or two. There were two percent in that trial that experienced a headache after the second vaccine, and there were less than two percent that experienced fever. Now, these are things that are normal, that should happen in your body as a result of your immune system being activated. They're not really something that we would not expect, but in these individuals, it seemed to be a little bit more pronounced. The best news of all, though, is the fact that the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine are both in ninety to ninety-five percent effective in preventing the disease and almost a hundred percent effective in preventing severe symptoms. So this is unheard of. The flu is thirty to sixty percent effective flu shot, so it gives you some kind of a comparison. So definitely, for me personally, when I get the opportunity to get the vaccine, I will certainly get the vaccine because those side effects are nothing compared to what we're seeing in the hospital with some of the patients that we're taking care of. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shaw. This is Commissioner Butcher. Any idea on what the cost of the vaccine per individual is going to be? You know, that's the first question that's going to come out of a lot of people's mouths. Well, I can't afford this vaccine or shot. I mean, that's the bottom line. You know, there's a lot of people out there that are willing, probably willing to take it, but it all boils down to the pocketbook sometimes.
Well, I got some really good news for you, Commissioner. The federal government paid for the vaccine in advance, so there's no cost for the vaccine. And we're allowed to bill your insurance, if you have insurance, the administration fee. And if you don't have insurance, then it is provided free to that individual. There will be, Norley will not charge any patient for the administration of this vaccine. We will bill your insurance. As you can imagine, there's going to be a tremendous cost on the part of Norley to set up these clinics, to man these clinics, and we need to try to recover some of that cost, and we'll do that through insurance, but we will not bill the patient individually for the cost of the administration of the vaccine.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, Mr. Shaw, this is Commissioner Compost. I know that, and you probably, I'm going to put you a little bit on the spot, not much, okay? Worldwide, there is a resistance to take the vaccine, and I'm just curious, as far as your personnel is concerned, do you have any idea what percentage is against taking the vaccine right now, or what percentage might want to take the vaccine right now? Myself, I'm a proponent of the vaccine. I want to take the vaccine, just put that out there. But I'm just curious, as far as your personnel is concerned, what do you, what do you see or hear from them?
That's a great question. So I'm going to divide my personnel into two groups. So you have providers, those are physicians, nurse practitioners, and physician assistants. And all but two of the seventy providers are taking the vaccine. So I think that gives you an indication of what your providers think about this vaccine. They have a high degree of confidence in the vaccine. Now, when you look at my staff, roughly half are taking the vaccine, and the remaining half, there's a significant number of the remaining half that have already had the coronavirus, and so they have some immunity. And the CDC is recommending that people that have had the coronavirus, that they wait ninety days from the time they had the infection before they receive the vaccine, because they have, they have immunity, and they're recommending that people give up that vaccine to somebody who hasn't had the virus yet. I think the remaining portion of them, and I think that we're going to find this in the general population, I think they just kind of want to wait a few weeks, a month, to see how the rest of us do with some of the side effects. There are some people that need to be careful, and there's a few people out there, for example, people that have to carry an EpiPen, they have severe reactions to food or environmental factors. It's recommended that they probably not take this vaccine because we haven't really studied the potential side effects for those individuals. Also, it's being recommended and people are being cautioned if they're pregnant, if they're planning to get pregnant in two months, or if they're nursing. Now, the reason why they're doing that is because as part of the study that was done, the forty-five thousand pregnant women were not in that study. So there hasn't been a study yet. Now Pfizer is continuing with their study. They're looking at long-term effectiveness of the vaccine. They're also looking at some of those classifications that we just mentioned that they hadn't studied, and I think they just announced that they started studies on children. Now, the current Pfizer vaccine is only recommended, I believe, for twelve and up. They're not recommending it for under twelve, until they complete the study. I think, I think the important thing, Commissioner Compost, that I want to do is I want to make sure that I provide the public with all the accurate information and let everybody make their own individual educated decision about whether or not they want to get the vaccine. And as with a lot of things, there's a lot of misinformation out there and conspiracies and things like that. And so I, you know, I'd really encourage people to look for sources that are reliable, such as scientific journals, the CDC website, and look at the, the actual scientific data from those studies. I didn't personally get a chance to see it, but when the FDA hearings were done last week, it was several people that watched it said it was very convincing, the information that came out.
Mr. Shaw, thank you very much, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to add one more thing. The Moderna vaccine, similar results. One of the strategies in New Mexico, the Moderna vaccine will be administered to nursing home residents and nursing home employees, and that will be done through Walgreens and C V S. They have a national contract with federal government to do that. So that'll be happening, happening in tandem with what we're doing at Norley.
Mr. Shaw, I just want to add that, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Shaw just want to add that I really, I'm just speaking for myself, but I really want to applaud the efforts that you and your personnel and Norley, that they've taken the lead in this battle, and we really are blessed and thankful that you guys are doing what you do for our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. I'm very proud of my staff. They've done a wonderful job this year.
Please thank them for us as well.
We will.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Compost. Mr. Bo, you have anything?
Yes, yes, Mr. Shaw. My question is, is there any difference between the two vaccines? I know the day-wise, as far as the twenty-one and the twenty-eight, they're both double shots, but is there any difference between one better than the other, or what's your take on that, David?
Yeah, so the, the side effects, I only went over the Pfizer side effects, but the side effects with the Moderna are very similar. However, they see a little bit higher preponderance of the fatigue for a day or two and fever, but the significant thing that differentiates the two is logistics. The Pfizer vaccine requires super-cooled freezers, whereas Moderna can be kept in a regular freezer, so I believe it's twenty-eight degrees below zero. And so from a logistical standpoint, it's much easier to handle. Now, there is a third vaccine that's coming out, we think in late February, early March, from Johnson and Johnson. It's a single dose, and that obviously could be a game changer because, as you can imagine, you want to vaccinate thirty-five thousand people, that's seventy thousand vaccinations.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely quite a bit. And as far as the Pfizer and Moderna, they're identically the same as far as the vaccine.
There may be minor differences, but they're both produced using the same technology of a messenger RNA. So you're introducing that messenger RNA into the system, and it's communicating to the cell's DNA to produce that protein.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Is there any more questions from the board? David, David Shaw, CEO, Norley Hospital, we want to thank you this evening for attending our meeting and answering the questions. We're glad to always be here, here for you and be one of your partners as well.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that, and look forward to continuing to work with you all to eradicate this virus.
Thank you. James?
That's all I have, sir.
Is there any other public comment?
David?
Yes, sir. You're giving me a chance to speak, you know? I wanted to know what the situation is with the city regarding with the COVID, because everything's been shut down, you know, it affects our tax base and our revenues, and I just want to know how we stand as far as the city goes, because I'm just curious as to what that would be.
James, you want to?
Sure. So like we had discussed at the previous meeting, we are seeing a reduction in revenue. Of course, I was, it would be nice if this meeting was a little bit later, so we would have the December report, which we're hoping will be up, but we are seeing about an average loss of about two hundred thousand on average per month. So we're closely looking at that. In January, we'll have a better feel for it, in the event that we do have to activate any of our revenue reduction plans. So that's where it is. Of course, we're seeing everything two months behind, so, but yeah, we are, we're seeing a reduction in our revenues, and I know that we have really clamped down on expenses just to preserve things so that we can get through the rest of this year.
Want to also mention about the letter we gave, Sam?
Right, yes, sir. Like Mayor Trillo had mentioned, we did send a letter to the state, specifically the governor. I know that what they had done in the special session was they had designated a significant or substantial, substantial amount of the federal cares fund to balance the state's budget, but there has not really been any programs or any other type of assistance other than the small hundred and fifty million dollars statewide in the form of local government assistance, as well as the grant program, the continuity grant program that goes directly to the businesses. But there hasn't been any response to that letter, as far as does the state intend to assist any, or provide any other assistance to local government to help offset the revenue losses, or resolve that funding in the state, the state.
Can I do a follow-up question?
Yes.
So how much did we have to spend more as a result of all the COVID requirements and things they put on the table?
That's a good question. I don't have the numbers right in front of me. I do have those, those numbers that we had, but it would probably, I know that for the local government assistance, the way that that worked was for expenses that you would have been covered from March first up until, I guess it was August first, and then what you anticipate spending up until December thirtieth of this year. I believe our initial grant request was around like four hundred and seventy-five to five hundred thousand is what we, it was a combination of what we had expended versus, in addition to what we anticipated on spending, on everything from, from additional salary costs, additional sanitation supplies, as well as additional equipment that we would need in order to get through the end of the calendar year. So we're looking at about probably plus to what we estimated was five hundred thousand. Of course, we were only awarded, as far as local government assistance, a hundred and seventy-six thousand. So we did, we did make what cuts we had to. Of course, our grant request was very, very reasonable, and we didn't ask for anything outrageous. It was all very conservative, very reasonable, so we did have to skittle back on some of that, and of course, our general fund had to absorb the additional sanitation supplies that are needed in order to stay in compliance with OSHA and public health order mandates.
So can you summarize, we're feeling pain as a result of this?
Definitely, definitely. What the, what the, the local businesses are seeing, as well as the citizens who rely on those local businesses, not necessarily always for the purchase of goods, but also for employment, we're feeling that as well. It's just ours is coming, it's not as immediate, it's two months behind. And of course, you know, with this, when we, we did do our budget for the current fiscal year, in March, we saw, you know, petroleum prices decrease, so we made cuts accordingly. But when you factor in the pandemic, it was very, very difficult to estimate what that actual impact would be, and now we're actually seeing that, we're having to make adjustments.
Thank you, James. Thank you, David. Is there any other question, public comment?
I could go and ask?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, James, I'm on D D radio. Let me ask you this. There was a lady, her twenty.
Let me ask you this. There was a lady in her twenties that died of the COVID nineteen here in East County. It was recorded on Sunday by the Department of Health. And then I've noticed the demographic is getting a little younger as far as some of the deaths. Is there a reason why that's occurring?
Well, no, sir. I kind of equate that to, it's a slot machine. You really don't know. It could be a seventy-year-old who's got multiple health conditions, or it could be a twenty-year-old without anything. It, the virus, there's, there's really no, just based on the information I get, there's really not an indicator or a prognosis that if you are positive, how you're, how you're going to react to fighting off the virus.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward to, we do not have no non-action items, so we'll go ahead and move on to action items. Do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty zero ninety-eight. Appointment to the Library Board, I'm not sure the name, the names.
Susan Bogdan.
Oh, Susan Bogdan, she, she wants to remain aboard that we keep her. Is that a second by Commissioner Bolt?
Commissioner Gandy.
Oh, Gandy, okay. Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Gandy. Is there a discussion by the board for this appointment? There's no discussion? Shannon, roll call vote.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, resolution twenty twenty dash one hundred, rejection of all bids received for Levington Main Street signage.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gandy. Is there a discussion by the board? Or James?
Well, Mayor Commissioners, we did go up the bid for a second time. One bid was only what was received from a company known as Century Sign Builders. You can see that we only had a forty-seven thousand dollar budget that was funded through various different grants. You can see that any portion of this project is over budget. So if the commission does approve this resolution tonight, part of this resolution would allow for us to actually go into direct negotiations with a vendor to see if we can't get a project on the, in the works that is actually within our budget, state code does allow for that. I did attach that to your packet. But if you do approve the resolution tonight, we would reject all bids and then we could go into direct negotiation.
Is there any questions by the board? There's no question by the board. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Resolution is rejected. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, resolution twenty twenty dash zero nine nine, appointments to the Levington Extraterritorial zoning board.
James, change to.
Yes, it would actually, I apologize, for some reason, the the staff summary didn't come over correctly. But the current members who are Betty Price, Julia Myers, and Stephen Carr, they would still like to consider, be considered to continue another term.
Do you want to include that in your motion, Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Do I have a?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion was made by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gandy. Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions by the board. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty one zero one, the Open Meeting Act.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bolt. James?
Mayor Commissioners, this is our annual requirement to have the Open Meetings Act. There's been no changes since the last resolution was passed.
Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions by the board. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Mayor Trillo?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolutions twenty twenty one oh two, amendment to the Levington Chamber of Commerce Professional Service Agreement.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Gandy. James?
Let me pull up the PDF real quick. Disappeared. Mayor Commissioners, the, as you know, of course, the impacts with the pandemic have not allowed some of the public events that we've had to actually occur. This is due to the public health order restrictions. Some of our scope of services with our Chamber of Commerce, you were caused them to create some of these events and run some of these events. In order to stay in compliance, they are requesting an amendment to their agreement to not have some of the events, but replace them with events of a similar nature, which does require approval by the city commission. And in particular, in section three point three nine four, it does require the Halloween safe stop list. This was just a list of businesses that were passing out candy. They would like to replace that particular scope of service with the Great Pumpkin People event that was held, which they did facilitate that as far as with the locations, the pictures and the website. The second portion of the contract is, of course, the Electric Black Parade. Specifically with the the public health order, it does specifically mention that a parade of any type is not allowed. So they can't have the Electric Black Parade. And what they want, they replace that with is a couple of events, the Holly Jolly Levington and the Holly Jolly Cruise, where they just asked businesses and residents to decorate their homes, register those, and then they had a map and they would go through and they would allow the public to vote on the best display for a residence as well as a business. This was also accompanied by Christmas music over the radio. So you take your family out and actually see it, very similar to a parade, but it wasn't a parade. And then the the other event that they would like to add to replace that is the Letters from Santa event, which will be held Thursday, where down on Fran Ashley, they had a mailbox where kids could drop off their letters to Santa. And on that, on Thursday, Santa will actually read them during Facebook Live event that folks can actually see. But if the commission is agreeable to these amendments, or if they would like to see some other alternative, the resolution will basically, if approved tonight, will allow me to execute that amendment to their agreement with the specific replacement events or scope of services that the commission decides on tonight.
Is Chamber Director available? She on? She was, okay.
I am on, sir.
Go ahead, Ness. Did you have any comments?
Well, I just feel with the public health orders and we, we feel that these events could possibly substitute for this year only. We'd like to get back to normal, as I assure you. Everyone would like to and have our events next year. But this year, we thought these might be suitable substitutes.
Is there any questions by the board for Chamber Director Leslie? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Mayor Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider accounts payable.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bolt. James?
Well, let me see here, the, of course, we have a lot of our routine expenses. Really, I would just open it up for any questions that you have. Some of the larger, larger items, just kind of running through, the Cherry Sea Reins on page one for eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine. That is part of the Veterans Memorial Project, which is reimbursed by a grant. CNM Electric for twenty-three thousand, that was for improvements to electrical infrastructure over at the youth center, which is reimbursable by the CARES funding. We have, let's see, another one. The, of course, eighty-two thousand five hundred to IRS, that's actually payroll taxes that made it on that report. Jay's Incorporated for twenty thousand two hundred. That was actually a replacement of two air conditioner units at our youth center, which we will recover some of that expenditure through grant agreements. The Levington Leader, of course, that's unusual, the fifty-four, fifty-four hundred, or it's actually on page one, five thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-four cents. That was actually for the upgrade to their website, which is reimbursed by as well. Municipal Emergency Services, this was PPE for interfacility transports. It's the PAPR's units, it's the purified air is power, air inspiration, respirators, which that is a reimbursable expense. We'll get paid back for that. Odessa Pumps was a typical vendor that we have. This was in particular for a check valve at our booster station number two. Proforce Law Enforcement, this was for our a transport box for less than lethal munitions. Stryker Flex Financial is a lease agreement that we currently have, which fifty percent, over fifty percent of that actually comes from a state grant that is used to pay for that. And any other questions the commission may have?
James, that Stryker Flex Financial, what is that regarding to?
The, what they call a power load system on each of the five ambulances. It's, it's a five-year agreement to where basically those were financed. It's to help load the stretcher with a patient.
Okay.
James, quick question.
Yes.
United Healthcare, that our insurance premium, is that pretty much what we've been paying for a while now? Has it gone up or? Anticipate?
That's actually what the monthly premium is for the current rates that we have. And that, we won't have a renewal on that policy until the next fiscal year.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
James, the Artesia Fire Equipment?
Oh, that is an order for Fire Department PPE and I, or that was purchased using state fire protection funds.
James, Waste Management is getting a pretty good chunk, a change from us, aren't they?
Yes, sir. What apparently what happened with that was with everybody working from home and having to work remotely, I guess, in the invoice, two, two months worth of invoices had been received, processed. So that is actually for, I believe it's two months.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Is there any other questions by the board? There is no other questions by the board. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Trillo?
Yes.
Compost's are approved. I, before we do the final motion, City Attorney McMahon, did you have anything for us? I skipped you earlier. Is he still on?
Yes, I'm still here, Mayor, but no, I had nothing to report.
Thank you, and I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Do I have a final motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, sir.
Before I make the motion, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And in doing so, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion. Motion to adjourn was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Butcher. Is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Mayor Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes, and happy holidays.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Same to you guys also.